Welcome, everybody, to the zoning board September 13, 2016. My name is Marty Aiken, I'm the chairman. To my left, the vice chair, Mr. Guevaras, former member, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Chin, Mr. Raydell. Behind me, Mr. Frankel. The head of inspectional services, Commissioner Duca. To my right, our clerk, Ms. Murphy. Do you have a cellphone or a pager? Could you please put on vibrate or silent so you don't interrupt the meeting? If anyone would like to speak, please step outside. If anyone's going to testify tonight, please stand and raise your right hand, please.
Anyone else who will be coming up here, if you're going to be doing a deposition, so that you swear, I'll wait until you've got your ballot. You swear that the whole truth, not the other truths, to help you down?
I do.
I have a motion to weigh the ratings for this 2316, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to have been weighed within three other minutes on August 23.
Is that second?
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And some more. All business, facts and development, 150-154 Quincy Avenue, case number 16013. The representative of the county, yeah, council.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'm just going to move these boards over. Mr. Chairman and members, good evening. Thank you for being here this evening. This is a continued case, a request for minor dimensional variances for this project at 150 and 154 Quincy Avenue. We filed our site plan review am zoning concurrently, and this board expressed its desire for us to finish the site plan review process first, and we've done that. We've got a site plan review approval from the planning board. We have final comment letters from the city's site plan review engineer, the city engineer, the city's traffic engineer, as well as inspectional services. All the questions that have been raised about this project have been answered. The drainage system has been fully reviewed, the drainage calculations and the design for the drainage system has been reviewed and approved. Also, our photometric plans showing the lighting on the buildings and how the light will travel across the site, also showing that the light does not travel onto the building properties, the condominium association located right next to us. All of that information has been submitted to the planning board. To refresh you on memory, I know it was quite a while ago, the first time we were here. This property is residency, residential lot, 2,000 square feet of land per unit. The site is an 18-unit site by right. We're proposing 17 units because it fits better and it gives us enough room for drainage and snow storage and a little extra parking lot at the back of the property rather than trying to squeeze in that 18th unit. So, it's again, it's residency, 17 units, they're all condominiums, three stories, two car garages on the first floor, living space on the second floor, living space on the third floor. When we were here, the changes that have been made since the last time we were here, actually, relatively minor coming out of the site plan review. This, this building right here, the one that's close to the property line, this building was shifted slightly further into the parking lot. The staircase for this end unit was changed to the side, so the stairs come down into the parking lot, so the person exiting that unit exits right into the parking lot. And these units here in the middle were snugged up just a bit closer to the parking lot to give a wider aisle for the emergency egress from the stairs of these units for a person to get around the building and come to the front of the site. As far as, as far as the site plan, that's really the only significant change that was made to what you saw when we came back in May. These are the exterior elevations for the building. The size of the building facing Quincy Avenue is proposed to be stone with seener impression shingles. On the fronts of the buildings where the buildings face each other and along the backs, we're using vinyl siding, not cheap grade vinyl siding, but an upgraded vinyl siding of high quality with a lot of window and door trim details to give the units some architectural interest. We're also proposing shutters on the fronts of all the units to make them, you know, make them more attractive, give them a more residential look. This, this perspective shows what the project would look like from Quincy Avenue, using them combining the landscaping plan with the elevations. And one of the changes that came out of site plan review was to add two more trees here and to add shrubbery along the edge of the parking spaces here and here, so that those cars are blocked or partially blocked from view from Quincy Avenue. So this is the, this is the final landscaping plan that shows the new trees on the site, and it lists all of the, all the plantings and the species and the size of those as well. This final plan that's on the floor was an issue that came up at this, came up at our meeting. There was a question about what it would look like from the back. Board members asked for the homes that are located back here at the rear of the site on Markinson Street, what this retaining wall would appear from their property. And this is a rendering of what it would look like from the backyard. The retaining wall is only about five feet tall. Their plantings were posed in the grass area between the property line and the wall, and there's a four-foot fence on the top of the wall with more plantings that are inside the fence, on the other side of the fence. And also, from this property line to the corner of this building is, I think, a 34-foot setback. So the, the buildings don't intrude too far toward the back of the site, and they're not, they're not right on top of that property. This was, the planning board generally will weigh photometric plans as one of the requirements of site plan review, but they're pretty good about weighing them in appropriate circumstances. They did not weigh it in this case, so we prepared one for them. This is, this is Quincy Avenue, and the light locations are here, 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 and here, and here, to light up the driveway and the guest parking spaces in the back. And so what this plan shows is these yellow numbers here on the corners are 0.0. So this plan shows that the light from these two lights will fade out and go back to zero by the time it gets to this corner, and here, and here, and here, and also on here. So condominiums that are located on this side won't have bright, bright light shining in their windows in the middle of the night. So those are primarily, all the issues that were brought up at site plan review, the changes that they asked us to make. This, as I said a minute ago, we're not asking for variances to build more units than what we're entitled to. We're under the maximum FAR, under the maximum number of units. We've got two parking spaces per unit in the garages, as well as five guest spaces in the back, guest parking. And, actually, that was another change, I think, Mr. Chairman, you asked us to try and put a little more parking out back. We added one more space back here, but we were limited to how many we could put back there because of the smoke and the retaining wall. And also, this plan, parking spaces aren't counted, not a parking count, but for these units that are here and in the front of the site, the buildings are so far apart, a car could park in front of those garage doors and it wouldn't block the driveway. The driveway would still be at least 24 feet wide. So even though these aren't counted...
That's why they put the new trees and shrubbery up, right?
Yes. You could have guest parking in front of this building, in front of this building, and then that guest parking would serve the ones in the middle where the units are closer together. So the variances that we're asking for are essentially parking setback variances. We're not asking for a variance in the number of spaces, just a setback on this side, and a setback for this building right here. Other than that, the project complies with zoning, complies with all the other requirements of the city. Tony, any of you here is with me as the developer and owner of the property? If you have any questions for him, we'd be happy to answer.
I think he's done everything we've asked him. And I like that back wall. I like the new shrubbery they put in there. The lighting plan, which is kind of important, so it's nice that it's not unhappening with the way it's seen.
Mr. Chairman, we, not to be very personal with you...
No, very good, very good.
Yeah, I'm very impressed by the change, and I think what you're asking us has been pretty minded at this point in life. You got a parking space that was nice to want, that we announced the landscaping plan, but it's nice to see it. So I'll be...
Absolutely. Is that a fine job?
Mr. Chairman, a converted response, so I'll be going ahead.
Raydell, have a motion, please.
This is Mr. Chairman, the matter of 16-06, facts and development, LLC, long time getting member, property variance, 17 units, three stories residential development on the premises number 150 and 154 Quincy Avenue. I make a motion to grant the agreement.
Second. On the second, on the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And some more. Thank you, council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, thank you very much. We're trying. On the case number 16026, Escrow Associates for a special permit to add one residential unit on the ground floor of the existing six-unit building on the premises number 7783 Newbury Ave. I have a letter here that they want to withdraw without prejudice. Have a motion, please.
The matter of 16-062, Escrow Associates, for a special permit to add one residential unit on the ground floor of the existing six-unit building on the premises number 7783 Newbury Ave. And Quincy made a motion to withdraw the prejudice.
Second. Motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And some more. 57 Shore Ave. Is there anyone here for that? Case number 16059, I got a letter here to move that until September 27. That's 57 Quincy Shore Drive. Have a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, the matter of 16-05, Marty Murphy, Realty Trust, the very special permit to construct a 28-unit residential building with parking at two street levels on the premises number 57 Quincy Shore Drive. I made a motion to extend the hearing to 9/27.
Second.
Second.
Motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And some more. Case number 16052, some prong for a special permit floodplain variance to demolish the existing single-family home and construct a two-family home on the premises number 107 Cross Street. Council.
Good evening, gentlemen. I just heard about one month ago, and we had the architect here, and he described the building as a two-family home. This is on a 6,160 square foot parcel of real estate, and it has all the zoning requirements that you can put a two-family on, except for frontage, and the frontage is 40 feet. The existing building on the property is a dilapidated building that's in pretty much a state probably built at the turn of the century. And the owner of the property tried to remodel the property, and what happened is the building inspector came down and said, encouraged him not to remodel it because of the amount of work that had to be done.
Council, not to interrupt you, but I think we heard everything. It was more about getting in touch with the council.
Yes, we did. I go down and see a council, a meeting, and showed him the plans, and then he advised us to, we were two of the neighbors that were reactive in the ward, and we visited the two neighbors, and neither one had any opposition to the development, and both were in favor of the idea of taking down the old building and putting up a new one.
You ever hear testimony? Thanks, thanks, Council. That's, that was my question, to make sure you just meet with the council, I think, so that he's happy with it. He wrote that letter and asked if we could put it off till we talked to you, so. Since that was done, I was fine with that. I think we could vote on that. We already heard testimony.
I wasn't here on that case, too.
We only had four.
Aye.
So you just have a straight chat?
Started asking.
And everything else, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. In case number 16-052, some prong for a special permit floodplain variance to demolish the existing single-family home and construct a two-family home on the premises number 107 Cross Street. I make a motion to grant the agreement.
Second. On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And some more.
Thank you very much, Council.
Welcome. Thank you, Council. Thanks for getting in touch with Council. On the new business, case number 16055, the reason that I'm going to step out is because I live across the street from the applicant, so I'm going to turn the meeting over to my vice chair. Okay.
Frankel, come on in. Does anybody want to say, "Great"? Thank you, sir. Thank you. Case number 16-055, Stephen, I'm going to put your name, so why don't you just tell me what it is?
That's me, sir. Stephen Wodisinski.
Thank you.
I'm the owner of the residence.
Okay. You're seeking a variance to construct a two-and-a-half story addition on the existing one-story home on the premises number 86 years ago. Say your name.
Who's doing your...
Yeah. Say your name to the record. Who are you?
My name is Paul McCurlough. I am the architect for the project. My office is 21 Palm Road, Bellew, Massachusetts. I've visited the property several times, firstly, it was notified by the bank because the property needs immediate structural and other repair work, and the roof, the siding, everything else. So, all of that repair work will be included as part of the new construction. Currently, there is a half basement with some crawl space at the back, and there is a floor above it, with a half-story over on the top. It's a hillside, stepped out from the street, and it's lower from the street. The proposed scheme is the image of the house from outside, like a two-story building with a dormant at the top, that's seen from the street, and it's lower than the street. Because the land is very sloping, some topographic constraints will have a building height more if you go at the end, at the back of the property. Now, the lowered basement, I don't know what you would call that basement or whatever, has only windows at the front because it's not possible to have windows, sorry, at the rear, it's not possible to have windows anywhere else. So the configuration of the land dictates the design that we have as such, and I worked with the owner to incorporate all of that aesthetical and architectural requirements and the program for the rooms that we have. They are all shown, and we have also some examples, which I don't think we have copies of, neighboring properties that show a similar scale. And in particular, this house, originally was just a ranch of this sort, and currently is in this situation. We have also other neighboring properties, and this is what we're going to have as the steps coming from the backyard to the front, to some nice stone walls. And this is a very modern-looking house, all flat roofs, and it extends much more than what you see in the picture here. Same as with the other properties. So, the proposed project, we believe, is in scale with the neighboring properties that I have produced the pictures, and we're asking for relief related to all the items which are, which are under notice. Probably, there has to be one correction regarding number of stories. So we have a basement, and two stories, and a half-story on the top. That's how it should look like.
I have a question. I have a couple of questions, but one is, I was looking into this as to what the parking situation is.
Parking situation?
Parking.
Or parking? Parking will, currently, the parking is accessible from the street. It's tandem parking at the slope, and what we're proposing to do, instead of having tandem parking, and making the two cars side by side.
So, I see here, you have, you're proposing this, and you're keeping that... Is that one, two, three?
Well, that, the third one is optional, because that's, that's how it's being parked
At the time being, in the winter, it's very difficult to park the driveway, very narrow and steep, and causes us to have to park on the street often, which is not allowed, and the neighbors don't like that. We'd like to keep just the two-deep instead of three-deep and widen it a little bit, but we are proposing to raise the grade to ease the steepness of the driveway.
I like that. I'm just, I'm just, as I said, a little confused because I wasn't sure if there were two spaces or three spaces, and I'm not particularly really happy with two spaces right in the front like that.
And we're willing to move it over as much as allowed. I understand that it shouldn't be in front of the house.
I believe it was a preference from the neighbor set out, they see one, two cars along that house, they will want to see one car. It's less of a two-similarity for them, and also, it's better with the landscaping.
The other question is two cars.
Yes, two cars, yeah.
Looks like the Dago parking lot. The other question that you said, it's sort of like saying that the basement is not going to be, well, it almost sounds incidental what you're saying, but it does have 947 square feet of living area. We approve, we approve, what is that, small?
That probably includes the crawl space at the back.
Shouldn't have been...
There's a utility room at the back.
That's a utility room at the back, and we have the crawl space at the back.
And being 90% concrete, it is a very cold basement and not very useful.
But you have, but useful enough for the bathroom, so it's, you also, you wouldn't be expensive, that sounds, you might could use it, right? So, that's kind of... So, does that not include crawl space?
Um, no, I don't think, I don't think, because it's transformed by, transformed by, yeah, 625, and it includes, it includes the Andrews home, which is on the left, and includes a little bit of the crawl space because the bedroom in the crawl, so it's not more than three. So what we have there is a big space, which is kind of a family room currently, and they sleep there sometimes when there's too much leak coming from the old bedroom, you know, upstairs.
Could I find, I took what you were saying, my, my question, we've done with what you were following your presentation?
I'm pretty well done, unless you have some more questions. I don't think there's any.
Sir, any questions?
Sir, I could say, we did meet with our surrounding neighbors, and we have a signed piece of paper, a letter of support. It was included in the package. I just wanted to restate that for the record, that no one has been against any of the design. We've gone over all the features of the home and the parking, and as of now, I know that we don't have any protesters at...
Eventually, we could sit down and...
Put the bath on the third floor.
Yes, sir. Reason being? Just convenience, since it would be a nice hangout for seeing the sunsets, instead of having to go down two flights or three flights. I agree, it doesn't need to be full. It can absolutely be half, and I think we plan on changing that, because it's unnecessary.
Fair. Thank you.
Does anybody want to speak in favor of this? Does anyone come step right up?
Hi, my name is Sean K., 32 years old, I'm a part of this property. I'd just like to speak in favor of this proposal. It's a good, it's a good design, and be an asset to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Anybody else want to speak in favor? One, wait. Tim? Marty Aiken, Z, you want to hear his app, Quincy? I live across the street from the neighbor. One thing I'd like to see is the third floor shower taken out, if we could. I don't think the shower should be up on the third floor, it just gives it a convenience that shouldn't be there for a decade. The first set of plans that he brought, we went through them, and he made some real nice changes. It may have looked like a real nice house in the front, because the first set didn't. And I don't think any of the neighbors were happy with what he had at the beginning. I'm glad we had a talk, because he's going to have a really beautiful home there, and the parking, the only thing about the parking, I want to say, is I don't want to see no parking in front of this house. So if he could go to the side of this house, maybe a half or quarter, a foot in max, go one foot in max, and he could probably fit two cars in that way, because there's other driveway right on the property line, and he might be able to get that second paddle up. So he could have two spaces, and then that third one would be easy. It would obviously be hot. Parking out there in the winter is horrendous or plodding.
What you're saying is, what he's suggesting, for you, you know, by having two cars next to each other, and you always keep the third option.
Correct.
Just space there.
And so it won't be in front of his house, you know, just a double Y, even even about 18 feet to fit that, and I go, 18 feet to fit it. So whatever they, he's got to speed out. It's just up front, yeah. So he could bring that back, even if it's...
We can never bring it back.
Bring it in. Bring it in. So, towards the property. Yeah. This is great. He's a married, so the property market, and this is not going to change, this stuff's going to contain it long, it's going to be lifted up so you can do a straight, not a straight, but a small, to have a small, small, just bring that back, like we get 20. Yeah. And make it 18, but back, so it's like...
I think it is 18 now, Mike. They're both nine wide.
So is he, so is 39 or 20? Oh, I read 20, so it's, yeah. He's going to shrink that, he's going to shrink that. At least, maybe 17, 18, maybe 17, and then bring the whole suite up, so he can have a property I mean, and he's got, you know, the NOS idea to make it, if you want, suppose 18 feet, so I'll be able to walk, because probably it could...
Yeah, so he's 15 right now. I mean, he's 15.
Yeah, so he's fifteen right now, I mean, fifteen could get him, would get him to the edge of the house, if he did sixteen, that's a foot in.
Sixteen, seventeen, as long as it don't go a foot over into the house, it don't looks bad. But he's got a nice home there, a nice design, I don't think he needs a shower. Crazy things can happen, showers.
It's in favor, it's in favor. We have letters of support here, I want to make sure, right, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven people. Eighty-five years, eighty years, eighty-eight, ninety-nine, Island Ave., eighty-eight years, and eight, and we put one there.
Anyone who's, we're going for the, are you in favor?
Yes, I just wanted a clarification on the plans, that first floor level will stay where it is now, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, because when I first looked at their drawings, it looked like it was higher than it would be now, but if that's, that's the case.
Going back, it is kind of high.
I'm at eighty years, so I'm next property to the south, to the south. And properties are close, on the feet, so the height of the house, which would be, from the first floor to their roof, could be twenty-nine feet. Ours is twenty feet, so there's a pretty big contrast, but I support Marty's suggestion about the shower, but we're certainly happy that property's going to be enhanced as it is. And what I used to talk with Drew about the issues of the construction, because our properties are so close to, we have some walled, flower garden, expensive, and we may need to be protected for our construction, and we'll leave on with that with.
Will you leave, give me your name and address?
Oh, yes, Richard Mann, eighty years.
Thank you. Anybody else in favor? Once, twice, three times, I'm going to call that part of the hearing over.
No correspondence.
No correspondence, okay. Anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? Once, twice, come on up, I'm going to say three times.
I just have to ask a couple of questions.
Okay.
Lois Murphy, 135 C Avenue. I'm delighted that they want a new house in that area, I've lived there all my life, and it will be an improvement. But it seems to me like it's going to be a four-story house.
It looks that way from the back.
And I, you know, I don't think that fits into the neighborhood. I mean, I'd love to see them have a new home, and I welcome them to the neighborhood, but I don't want to see a four-story house. So, if there's any way around that, I don't know.
Yes, Mr. Duke.
Yes. What are we talking about here, as far as how many stories is this really, because I believe you mentioned stories.
This, this house has a local zoning ordinance, it would be a three and a half story, it would be considered three and a half stories by zoning.
And the zoning allows a three and a half story?
They're here today to seek a variance, because in residential A, it only allows two and a half stories.
That's right.
So, in the front, you'll see two and a half, but typically, when you have a land that slopes down, typically you'll have an additional story in the back. But what they, you take the average of the two dimensions, and that's what makes it, this particular house, three and a half stories.
Makes it three and a half?
Three and a half, because of.
So, they're asking you to approve the three and a half story house and the two and a half story house, so?
It's, it's really, it's two and a half story from the front, that's what you'll see. But because of the slope and the grade, it will be a three and a half, if you look at that back end.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else opposed or undecided?
I just got one quick question, John Rutherford, 62 Grant Wall Road. Just to clarify, is the rule two and a half or three and a half stories? Like, let's say, if you want to build a house in a residential A, how many stories can you build?
I think if you're on a flat surface.
Two and a half.
Two and a half.
Two and a half, so it's two and a half, so like you were saying, it is two and a half, so they're asking for you guys to grant the variance, to let them go one extra story.
Well, you know, it's.
I just wanted to clarify her, because she asked a good question, and you kind of skated the answer.
A lot like this.
Huh?
A lot like this.
Okay, okay.
So, from the front, they're really two and a half stories, it's just because of the drop-off that they have the foundation.
I'm just, I'm just, like I said, it's just the zoning in Quincy seems to be confusing to the people. And, and I'm just trying to clarify, because I myself am confused, and so I just wanted to ask questions to follow up on.
That's why I asked Mr. Duke.
On what they were saying, but if, you know, I, I would say that if Marty Aikens, I was going to back whatever Marty wanted in this, and he seems he approved this, and so I would have to say, you know, I'm just neutral on that, I'm not like against this or for this project or whatever, but.
Just to clarify, to answer your question.
Yeah.
It's, because of the slope, they have, because of soil shape and topography, that, that gives you the ability to ask for variance. Otherwise, actually, that's.
But I mean, if my neighbor is higher up in the air, and I'm on the lower lot, does that give me the right to build three and a half stories?
Every lot is unique, and that's why we're here today.
Okay, 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 thank you very much.
Anybody else undecided or opposed? Once, twice, three times, I'm going to call that part of the hearing closed. Place needs a lot of work, these people want to make a lot of work. I think I agree with the neighbor who doesn't like the, the neighbors don't like the shower upstairs. I'm not crazy about the shower in the basement either, but, okay. I know in Quincy, it used to be a little, and I had one bathroom, because everyone always had one, and that's crazy. So, I think I'll be on, I'm in favor of this. I'll be voting.
I think the bathroom issue has been very much a great.
Yes, sir.
I want to make sure I'm clear on the parking issue, because I agree, I wouldn't want to see two cars in front. According to your drawing, you've got seventeen point three feet from property line to the corner of the building, as to be constructed. So, at eight and a half feet, they're going to be three inches off the property line. That's, is that how you want it to are, that way you drive? I think because there's a curve, it goes down, I don't think that. All right, so, so we're going to construct our order so that it's, that the corner of the parking is going to be off of that property.
Off, off of this.
You go as far, as far as you can go over the property line, as long as it doesn't cross that corner. I'm fine with that.
So, there's going to be no car parked in front of the house?
Pretty much, you're trying to not get by whatever is in your driving, hopefully, not me. All right, yeah, I have no, it's a big house, it's going to be great. Neighbors seem to be in favor of it, so with those couple stipulations, I'm in favor.
Like what?
Same.
Same. Make a motion.
We got in case sixteen dash zero five five. I'm going to take a shot. Stephen A., we'll just, we'll just scan.
Close?
We're variant to construct a two and a half story addition on the existing one-story house on the premises number eighty-six years. I'd like to make a motion to grant the variance subject to two conditions. One is that the shower will be removed from the third floor, and the second one is that the parking area be moved, so it doesn't encroach on the front of the house.
Because they have, they can go as far to.
To the right.
Yeah, to the right of the.
To the right, to the right to the property.
All right, that's enough?
Yeah. Second?
Second, thank you. Object to the motion, see no, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? You guys have it? Thank you.
Yes.
So, this is the back of the house. That's the average, right? Front of the house, is that, uh, one hundred point six, so it's a five-foot elevation, fifty-five. So, from the front, it's really, it's a thirty-four dollars.
All right, we take a shot, a little break, folks, you kind of find mass?
Two and a half story home.
Yeah.
Thirty-five thousand, it's small, on a newly built, like, for people like high ceiling. So, looking at it from right front, so elevation, it's going to be a thirty-four, two and a half story home. Just because that backdrop.
The neighbor directly behind them?
Yeah, they can see that they have, you know, a basement built, though, but it's still going to be, it's still going to be concrete foundation. It's not going to look like a three and a half story home, so.
No, I'm just, honestly, I'm telling the truth, I mean, I want to do something myself in Quincy soon.
No, no, but I'm just.
And I just keep like, it's like, I'm up here doing this and research.
I'm just explaining the technicality is, yeah, like, from the back of her house, like, if she looks up, she's going to see a concrete foundation with a, with a glass door, and then what looks like three stories above. You know, but in reality, if you were on the other side of the street, it looks like a thirty-four, two and a half story house, which is, if we were sitting up here approving a two and a half story house, somebody's going to go to thirty-five, two and a half, you know what I mean? So, it's just like the top, the topography of that property.
Okay.
I mean, you take five, you know, you don't think it's a lot, but it's, you know, you put, even one of us, twenty ten parks, and five foot difference, it's going to look like huge, it'll look like, you know, double.
Or like.
Man of sixteen dash zero five six, look, but not, petite, petite.
The whole day is. Can't work on your French yet, huh?
This is really.
Don't have to do your marketing.
I'm making public speaking. For a special permit to operate a dog daycare facility at the premises number seven, there go, three seventy-one Grant Street, Quincy, is the proposing holiday council here.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Lord, Attorney Henry S. Levin, eleven eleven eight seventy-five Southern Avenue. And I'm here to represent the applicant. With me tonight is Kim Healy and Jean Campbell, who are the principals of Petit Wolf LLC. This is not a kennel, but unfortunately, under the zoning bylaws of the city of Quincy, we come in at, under that cover. And, but this is a doggy daycare center. I have submitted both their business plan, which is in your folder, as well as my explanation of what's going on there. We're not asking for any variances, the building has been, was built in nineteen twenty. We feel that there are ten parking spaces, seven on site, and there are three parking spaces along the street. The, this, this is where the people will come, drop their dogs off. They're not staying there, so it should not cause any traffic problems. There are two designated parking spaces in the parking area in the rear for the staff, and that's part of the lease. We, we have executed a, a two-year, with a two-year option lease, subject obviously to getting this special permit. This place has been empty for, for almost a year now, and we feel that, as a matter of fact, I have three letters here, one from the director, Butter, who is very concerned about the fact that it was, that it's empty. And she feels that this would be a terrific advantage to the neighborhood.
She thinks the neighborhood's coming to the dogs, right?
And I ask you, and two, and two of the other letters are from customers that they already have, as to the operation, how, how well they treat it. And the name itself, Petit Wolf, indicates what type of a dog they're taking care of. They're not taking care of a big, you know, dominoes or wild ones, things like that, they're little, little dogs. Okay? I have been before this board once before on a similar situation at Willett Street, where it was approved. And, and unfortunately, that never happened. It wasn't this business, it was another business, but it was for the same thing.
Yeah.
I don't know, I, I've researched everything. The building is what it is, there's no setback requirements, because it's, meets, because it's a non-conforming use, it meets all of that, that criteria. I have, as I say, I have my two clients here, if you have any questions. As I say, we've submitted the business plan, as how they take care of them, what they do with the mess, things like that. And everything is laid out, fine. I don't know if any of the board members have any questions to ask directly to my clients.
I don't, sir. I'm good for it, though, thank you. Any, is there any outdoor, what's the outdoor facilities, fenced, is it?
There's a, there's a small area on the front, it's a great space, where the dogs can go out and potty, but most people with small dogs don't really want them out and about, so.
What's the, do you have a side limit, then, what's the, is there a weight limit?
Yeah, yeah. We're looking at like maybe thirty-five pounds for mass.
Okay.
I'm sorry, you said, I'll put that consistently, I'm sorry, you said that they're dropping them off, but they're not staying there. They are staying. They're not staying out, the people aren't staying.
That's, that's what I meant, the dogs are staying. If I didn't.
Let me try to.
No, no.
It's a dog and owner, baby.
Yeah, and, and in some cases, the owner goes and picks up the dog at their home, so.
It should not cause a traffic or a parking problem, this whole situation.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you're currently operating a daycare, no?
No.
Oh, you're not?
No, I want dogs, and I, I'll go to people's homes and take them out, care for them, but no.
Okay.
So, this is, is kind of the next step of evolution.
All right, thank you.
And Petit Wolf LLC, how you doing the dog walking down?
No, no, we just kind of came up with that as far as.
Let me ask why you're standing there. So, if the owner doesn't come, pick them up, and take them home?
That would probably be the option, but we can always, we can always take them and drop them off at home. Some people prefer pick up and drop off, to, you know, dropping their own dog off.
That's a very nice service, if you take them to a home.
It is. They have, they do what service if they like.
Not like we'd, the dog, he would never come back.
But it's, you know, it's like a concierge service.
Yeah.
And no overnight boarding at this location?
No, no.
Anything else from the gentleman? Those could have a seat. Anybody want to speak in favor of this?
If I could just submit these three letters.
Oh, yes, thank you. Anyone want to speak in favor? Once, twice, no times, that part of the hearing. Oh, we do have these letters that are in favor.
Three letters.
Three letters.
I'll take them.
Okay, very good. Anybody wants to oppose or undecided? One will speak, oppose or undecided, come on up, speak your name and address for the record, please.
Milton Eisenhower, three sixty-seven Grant Street. I welcome them trying to do some of this property, it's been vacant for a while. I look right there, the green spot she's talking about, I believe it's the front yard of three sixty-nine.
No, it's right in front of the building, right on, right in front of.
Yeah, that's not my answer, they extended the sidewalk out, and so you can't park all the way on the corner. The parking is an issue, the parking in the back, there's four apartments at three seventy-three that share it. There's a built business at the bottom of three seventy-three that share it. Three sixty-nine shares it, and three seventy-one will share it in the back. Okay, the landlord is actually an absentee landlord, lives in Maine, doesn't police the property at all, which is going to be a concern when we come to dog waste. The dumpster out back is never empty, it's always overflowing. They come maybe every eight, ten days. Right now, there's an abandoned car in the back, I've complained, I've been complaining to the property manager at EW Realty here on Dimmock Street. I sent them a text with the pictures of the car, no plates on it, no anything, broken windshield. We look at it, we go out my back door every day, we have to look at it, we have to look at the dumpster. And I'm sure they'll do a good job with what they create as far as their dog waste and everything, but it's all pavement in the back. There's no, no turnout area in there. The driveway, we actually own. The driveway, we actually own, looking up the driveway, we own to the left of the driveway, up to the foundation of three sixty-nine, so some of this, that yard is ours. Are there gonna be dogs being let out there? I'm worried about the deodor, if they're out in the back. I mean, as far as the abandoned car, I sent her on, on August eighth, a picture of the car. I sent it again on August thirtieth.
Do you think it was... You show which houses you... Is this one here?
This is a...
Okay, this is a...
Yeah, this is me.
Okay, all right.
This house has been in my family since nineteen thirty-eight.
Okay.
That shed is now going down. Okay, see how we own right up to the foundation? This here is the parking area, the dumpster's located right where it says ID. And it's always, and, and there's a problem with a lot of traffic flow here. All hours of the night have called the police, have dealt. I've done, I've done everything I can on my side to stop it being woken up at three in the morning. That's, that's a different issue. There's a big parking issue here. And the dog waste, this is the yard I'm talking about. She's, they extended the sidewalk here. Where they extended it out so that people can't park. But they also did it where the liquor store used to be across the street. The liquor store has since moved. So, I mean, I welcome anything to improve the neighborhood, but there's, my concerns are, what's gonna happen with all the dog waste?
They have a, they have a, and they submitted a lot. And it looks like they're gonna have to tie it, there's gonna be a bio floor. So they're gonna be generally cleaned up.
Inside, okay.
That's what I was saying.
Okay.
Okay, they're gonna clean the floor. We have a couple of situations in the city that, that we were told, and we haven't had complaints.
I'm sorry?
Of the dog waste at the other locations out of...
Have they gotta be putting it in the dumpster? I don't think my closer can flush it down the toilet.
No, no.
Actually, I, I believe that Drew did, when one went to license plate, that you could put that reset to sanitary.
Just, yeah.
Not implied, not implied. Not implied, not implied.
Right, right, right. Well, there, and like I said, this, this is an absentee landlord. You can't get a hold of them, and, and the property manager, if you will, never answers the phone. I've had to go to their office to voice complaints.
Would I actually call my office, Bob?
Do you have a card?
Yeah, I'll leave your, I'll give you a card.
And, but other than that, work, work.
Just wanna ask you a question.
Yeah.
Where, where are they, are they parking here?
There's your dumpster.
These are the parking, there's parking spaces, and there is parking, three spaces on the main street. There is no parking on the...
There's handicap parking in front of this home, which is three sixty-seven, that's our house. The driveway and anything to this side of the driveway is ours. My thing is, is mainly the parking, there's four unit apartments up here, plus the business on the bottom, that's three seventy-three. Three seventy-one is where they wanna be, and there's an apartment above three seventy-one. And then there's three sixty-nine, which is all owned by the same person, and all their parking is in the back.
And just, just to let you know, they're calling from two of their employees.
Right, and I'm sure they're...
That's correct.
And there's an abandoned car, and that's why right now, it's been abandoned for a long time. I'm sure they'll take care of that. Other than that, we're welcoming anything to improve the corner.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen, good luck. Anybody else? Pumps are undecided. Come on up, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm John Delaun, Fetter Falls Boulevard. But I'm a deodor of Wagging Tails at two two six Water Street. My, I have no problems with any kind of competition, I actually welcome, you know, more dogs in the area. My only issue with it is two specialty businesses that we're running, and proximity, I also, I, I do big and small dogs. Standing out from where I am, my business and my parking lot, I can pretty much see their business.
Where are you?
Two two six eight Water Street, right behind the goalposts. You guys approved, you guys approved last year.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so it just, for me, it would just be a detriment to both of our businesses, just being saturated in that one neighborhood.
I've had plenty of dogs in this town.
No, I, no, I, I, I totally understand, I just don't think, you know, I welcome the competition, or not even competition, but I welcome the other business. I just think it'd be detrimental to both of us just having the only two daycare's really in Quincy, right on top of each other. That's all my...
Can I, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is it that you have your own customer base, or is this like general location that people come, that live in the area? Or is it a customer base that you already have?
I have, no, I've built it from ground up so far. I have, um, Dorchester Quincy, Waymouth, Rain Tree, mostly Quincy. But, yeah, mostly, they come from, it's, it's a location thing. So they come from all over South Shore, yeah, right now.
And the reason I ask, I'm just wondering how that, if you, if you're not catching local folks with dogs, then you're, you're basically picking animals from different various areas of the...
Well, they're picking me.
They're picking you.
Yeah, it's, it's either proximater home and proximiter work, doesn't matter.
Thank you.
Okay, I put that part of the theory over. I, I'm in favor of this, they have their own parking spaces, they have a, have a lease, they have a plan. The building's there right now. I think that there's plenty of room for, I can be, plenty of dogs in town. I don't think there's gonna be a shortage of that. But was, well, someone has to get, make their plan a little better, I guess. So I'll be, I'll be in favor.
One, just, I have one question before we proceed. Do you have a customer base that you have now with your walk-in business?
Yes.
Would you expect that they're gonna be...
They've already said that they would come on board.
So that would be, that's your start?
That would be my, yes.
Do you have an approximate number?
At the top of my head, I'm gonna say fifteen.
And that's enough to, that you get started?
To get started, yes.
Okay. And the, with the, are you gonna be in the same dumpster that's there now? Or are you gonna bring something in separate?
As far as I knew, that the dumpster was there for us, so, I mean, we can address that.
Okay, well, with the general text, I can...
If I, if I could just interject, now that I've heard this problem, it, the problem already exists.
Right.
It's not something that they're creating.
Right.
And I will get to the owner and to the office, to the property manager, and try to get that straightened out, for, not only for the neighbors, but for us. You know, we, we don't want that problem. We wanna be a good neighbor to, to everybody, and if that's a problem, that's something that we can insist upon, because that's part of the lease. But they're supposed to take care of that.
But has it hurt, they're not doing that?
Well, that's why I say, I, I will interject the, the board's concern, the building inspector's concern, and try to get that thing resolved.
If we can get those issues resolved, I'll be in favor.
What question? Will you be doing any grooming there?
Yeah.
Programming, and is that front area where the grasses, is that fenced in or not fenced?
I'm sorry?
No.
Not fenced?
It's not, no. The dogs won't be out in about, in the neighborhood. They'll go out when they have to potty. If they need to be walked, I'll actually take them to a different area to walk them. I have privileges at the Atlantic down in Marina and at the Metro, because I've done business down there for a long time, so I can use their little dog box. I also have a nice, big, beautiful yard of my own. So, you know, and I've let the dogs roam in my own, yeah, many times. My neighbors are more than happy, you know, they never complain.
I think as, as long as we can get it cleaned up for the adjacent neighbor, I mean, I think his issue is valid, you know, with the abandoned vehicle and with the dumpster, that's what we have to, if we can put those somehow on condition, that'd be a benefit.
They want it conditioned, because that's really not what this applicant...
But, I mean, you also, you know, make sure you reach out to Jay, to Health and Human Services, if you see that problem existing. These two sound like they're gonna be very cooperative neighbors, so I think that they'll probably be jumping on their landlord to, to empty that.
Next one, please.
Well, my, one of my concerns is blocking our driveway. Quite often, you get them out of our house.
Hello, hello, hello?
You heard that already. Your oral apology is one go.
I'm having a twelve pounder myself, I'm sensitive to the fence, so I can listen to my own personal... At least, needs to make sure that parking is exclusive. And I think you're probably going to save yourself a problem if you can somehow take control of the dumpster being picked up and dropped off, rather than leaving it to somebody apparently is not capable or willing to do it at this point. As the business goes, there's lots of dogs, it's a great business. I live at the Atlantic, I got dogs over there.
Okay.
Sure, I'll see you. Anyway, so I'll be there.
Hello, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Regatta case number sixteen dash zero five six. I'd like to make a motion, I'm sorry, Regatta, Petit Wolf LLC, for a special permit to operate a dog daycare facility on the premises number three seventy-one, Renner Street, Quincy. I'd like to make a motion to request a grant, special permit.
Second? Status of, no objection with the motion, all those papers say aye?
Aye.
opposed? We have it. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Man number sixteen dash zero five seven, age of twelve, on a variance, described as a good kind of premises, number Broadway in Quincy. Is there applicant or represented here? Hello, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Niall Zitara. I live in the thirty-third Broadway, with some other sisters. And I bought the house two years ago. Here, this is the house, yeah, this is. It's a small house, eleven rooms, square feet. I'm trying to do addition in the front entrance, like ninety by eleven feet, and little addition in the back, and I'm asking for variance. I'm front addition with existing front walls and north. To align earlier additions with existing north wall. May I show you, I'm sorry, drawing, if you want to give it to us?
We have all your...
Oh, okay. So...
So this is gonna be a two-family house?
Uh, no, actually, it's not gonna be two-family house, but it might sound like a two-family house, it's gonna sound...
Well, you talked about in your, here, that you want to have an in-law. There's really no such thing as an in-law in Quincy. It's either a one-family or a two-family.
It'll be one.
But I think, I think you're actually in a zone where you could have a two-family.
Yeah, I mean, my son wants to come and live with me. If it's possible to make a two-family, I can make a two-family.
I mean, I mean, how many kitchens do you have it gonna put?
No, in the room, it just won't be. I didn't go for, for two, because I didn't know.
Okay, so...
I knew and I didn't know about those, that's why I asked.
We talked to this guy.
I didn't know, I'm sorry.
So that, that's the idea I was a little confused about. So you have only one kitchen. So school's gonna want their house to be...
Yeah.
So it's, no confusions by saying you're asleep, because that's something different. So, how many bedrooms do you think it's gonna work?
Uh, I have two bedrooms, right now I have two bedrooms, one first floor, and living room, dining room. In the second floor, I'm gonna be a two-bedroom, master bedroom, and two-bedroom.
Now, Mr. Duher, are we here today because by aligning this differently, it becomes binding? It's, it's, I believe it is a variance because of the addition, and that's why he's here.
It is a variance.
And I guess he's having a feeling that there's, and, you know, by saying the word in-law, I think it is a one.
Okay.
And I talked to some of my neighbors, they don't have an issue. And one of them, actually, is a boss, named James, he just signed the paper, and he was charging me.
Any else want to ask? Any questions to the board?
I have, I have a question. If you could do a two-family, is that something you're interested in? Because if we vote on this, you'd have to submit a whole nother proposal to do a two-family. Knowing that it is business, it's res B, right? So, knowing that you can, you do have the option, if you want, you can...
Yeah, I mean...
You'd wanna not have us vote on this tonight, you wanna take this back and have...
To your architect.
Have them design a two-family, so that's up to you, I mean. But if we vote on this, we're only approving the one-family addition.
One-family addition.
Okay. Okay, no, no, I'm just, I'm just giving you the option.
Do you have any better suggestions?
No, no, I'm just giving you the option. So what, what I'm saying is, if we do this, it'll be as a single family. You can't do the two-family. If you, if you wanted to make it a two-family, you have to come back, you have to reach the mayor, you have to do all, everything, get new plans, and come back to us, so, just so you know that. So if you wanna take a second and figure that out, or, or we just approve it as a one-family now and move on, and that's where you build.
Parking would be a concern, wouldn't it?
Yeah, probably. I mean, it could be a long, I mean, I'm sure you could find it, I'm just, I'm just more saying that...
It's using just one kitchen and second floor, I can, I can...
No, 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 I mean, it's... It's up to you.
If we had the option, I'm sorry. My name's, I'm my son. I think if we had the option, we would like to do a two-family.
Yeah, so why don't, why don't you go talk to the architect? Go, go sit down with them, tell them, you know, schedule an appointment with Jay, go sit down with Jay, and he'll help you walk through. I mean, the one issue you're gonna have is parking, obviously, which was already brought up, so... And then you can come back in front of us with a two-family, and if, if at that time that didn't work, I'll get...
Before you go, I'll make a specific note of this. Is it hard to do that, would that have to be a whole new set, has to be a whole new case, you have to reapply again? Yes, what, what I would recommend, he met with Paul McCarthy, and this really truly is just a redo of the house, and you have to variance. He used the word in-law, but I think that's because you have people in there. Making the suggestion about a two-family, if that's something you wanna look at, and we don't know if that's plausible...
Exactly, I mean, my son wants to be with me, so...
Well, why don't, why don't we do this? We have our zoning clinic on Thursday at two o'clock. If you wanna come in, I can take a really close look at it, and kind of, you know, sense of what, what the, what the possibilities are, with respect to parking, and, because you're talking four vehicles now. So I, I, I'm not, I didn't take this in, Paul, then. Okay, so you know what, maybe, we could, anybody want to like here speak in favor or oppose this case? Anybody here? You are.
I'm in there, don't matter. Two houses down.
Yeah.
I, I have no problem.
Okay, so why don't we do this, why don't we continue this with couples?
Since September twenty-seventh.
Okay. And in the meantime, you talk to him.
You wanna come in Thursday at two o'clock?
Yep. Okay, so maybe might be a good point.
Might be a good point.
Yeah.
All right then.
It might be a better option than, you know, it's right towards the floor.
Thank you for taking the time.
Mr. Chairman, Regatta case number sixteen dash zero five seven. Now, I see tar or variance to construct an addition on the premises on the third free driveway at Quincy. Make a motion to postpone the meeting to September twenty-seventh.
Second?
Second.
I would love to see that in all favor.
Aye.
If you do come back on this one, I will be asking a question as to why we have two fractures. I don't wanna know now, but I will be asking that question.
Well, I mean...
I don't want you to know now, you don't want to know now. So, maybe you ready to answer the question?
I can put it on the side, but it's gonna be parking on the side. The door is there now, and I'm just moving further.
See you in two weeks, bye.
Thank you so much.
So, Thursday two o'clock.
You'll be at our office. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
See you later.
Case number sixteen zero five eight, Boston Property Development LLC, where they have constructed sixty units, multi-family, residential, premises number twenty-three and thirty-three. For one, Ridge Street and Quincy. So we've been having a nice slideshow here?
Well, yes.
Is there anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record. My name is Evan Fleming. I'm here on behalf of Boston Properties, Property Development LLC. I'm joined today, while, while I talk, they're gonna set up the slideshow for you, to show you the details of the proposal. I'm joined by Rob Elsilio and Catherine Stiglal from Embark Studios. I'm joined by Rob Elsavio, um, and Catherine, Catherine Stignell, from Embark Studios. Both Rob and Catherine will go through the slideshow and show you the details of the proposal. Our Mr. McDonald and John Hanson are also here from Boston, Boston Property, as the representative of the, of the developer. Uh, if I can just go through a little brief background, then I'll turn it over to Rob, uh, to kinda walk through the details of the proposal. Um, this is, uh, the Boston Property Development, by the way, is located in Quincy at one twenty-five Greenleaf Street in Quincy. Peter McLaughlin, his principal, actually grew up in the neighborhood, um, and has done, and brought the business back to Quincy from Boston, uh, when they bought that building on Greenleaf Street. And interestingly enough, they chose their first three development projects right in the same neighborhood that, that Peter grew up in, right here in this location. Uh, the first matter was actually ten Merrymount Road, uh, which was a conversion of an office building. Uh, it's located behind the convenience store, right on Merrymount Road, across, right next, across the street from the Verizon building, um, and that was, that was done a couple, a few, a couple of years ago. And then the second project was the Temple Bethel property, that's presently under construction. It's a fifty-three unit residential building. I'd like to say, I think it's coming out beautiful, um, it's a really interesting, exciting project. Um, and that's a, um, this particular property is located directly behind the Temple Bethel site on Bridge Street, um, and is known as twenty-three and thirty-one Bridge Street. Two separate parcels of land that are approximately twenty-eight square feet in total size. And those prop, this property, like the Temple Bethel property, is zoned business C, uh, which allows for multi-family use of the, of the, of the site, which is being proposed tonight. What Rob is gonna share with you in detail is the proposal to, to, uh, to take down the two, two-family homes, enlarged barn, a garage that's on the site, and construct a sixty-unit multi-family development on the site with parking under the building, completely hidden under the building, for ninety-eight parking spaces, and Rob will show you that in, in more detail in a moment. What we're here, before this board floor, uh, is for dimensional relief from the zoning ordinance, from the dimensional provision from the zoning ordinance seventeen point four. Specifically, we're seeking variances from the minimum lot area per dwelling, uh, minimum lot area for the total lot size. Residence C, when it converts, um, to residential from business, uh, I'm sorry, business C, when it converts from, uh, business to residential, um, requires a lot size of forty-two thousand square feet, and this lot is eight, thirty thousand eight hundred thirty-eight square feet. The building height is also being requested, or relief requested. Um, the way this building is designed and the topography that, that the site sits on, um, is, uh, shows that the building, although it's gonna be five stories, which is well, well within the height requirement of the ordinance, it will actually be sixty-four point five feet in height, as opposed to sixty feet, which is the maximum, uh, provision of the ordinance. And we're also set, uh, requesting relief from building setback. Within the application, I sought general dimensional relief, and I highlighted the provisions that we were seeking relief from. Um, the, during the peer review process at the planning board, it was also noted that because the height of the building is sixty-four point five feet, that we also need relief from the rear setback as well, so I, I would amend the application in that regard, and, and seek rear setback relief, as well as side setback relief. Uh, you'll see the shape of the building, which is an interesting shape that really maximizes the site, but the, the shape of the site really creates a hardship for the layout of this building, and creates the reason for, for, and the grounds for the relief that we're requesting tonight. Despite the challenges with this site, um, this building is actually meets or exceeds the dimensional requirements in many other respects, things that are very important to this board, one being minimum lot area per dwelling unit, uh, that is met in this particular case, and most importantly, I think, to the neighbors, parking is also met with two levels of under, underbuilding parking. Garage parking that's really hidden, much of it is hidden from view, um, from the historic buildings that are in the area across the street, or, and, and the National Park Service across the train tracks, um, which will be, uh, which are taken into consideration in the architectural design. Uh, this matter, uh, like the, uh, like other matters that come before this board, is also the subject of review of other, other boards, uh, specifically site plan review of the planning board. We've begun that process, we had our initial hearing last month, um, and during that meeting, uh, probably the one, um, issue that was raised, um, and discussed in most detail was the architectural elements as it relates to the national park, across the train tracks, and making sure that this building's not gonna have a negative impact on the national park. And as a result of that, uh, after that meeting, uh, the applicant has held meetings with the National Park, Marion Peet, from the, the director of the National Park, um, and will also meet with the Historic Commission, um, and will continue those discussions with the National Park and the mayor's office to ensure that the architectural design of the building, mostly as it relates to that side of the property, will, will take into consideration that the historic treasures of the city. Um, and so we'll continue to do that. At the meeting, however, at the, at the planning board, no other issues really, uh, were raised by the neighborhood. The discussions that we had with the neighborhood during our neighborhood meeting with both city councils, both Kirsten Hughes and Margaret LaFares, because this is in a, kind of an interesting location, um, uh, was, was really more, more focused on the design of the building, ensuring that it meets and fits into the community. Um, and their most important concern was ensuring that there was sufficient parking for this new proposal, and that, that, that it didn't require parking within the street or the small street network, and they felt very comfortable, uh, that there was sufficient amount of parking being provided for this proposal, so. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Rob to, uh, kinda walk through the details of this plan, and if, if you can answer any questions.
Thank you. Next, so Rob Elsavio, from Embark Studio, I'll take you through some of the plans now. So just to orient everybody, but, um, so, the site is the triangular shape, areas on the red, Newport Ave, Bridge, and Hancock down that side. The important thing to note here is that Bridge Street is one-way up until that point, and it's two-way from here down the hill. This is in the close view, this is the current project that's under construction now by Boston Property Company, uh, so this would be sort of a sister project to that, and looking at sharing some of the amenities and site areas and so forth. Um, as Ed had mentioned, we've spent some time, National Park Service, actually had a meeting with them tomorrow morning, to go over to understand better for them what the views are from their property, the impact towards our development.
Just in case, please.
Yeah. So this is, uh, one of the civil engineer site plan drawings, which better shows the outline and footprint of the building, as Ed talked about, uh, we've got some dimensional variations, uh, dimensional setbacks that we are going to be seeking variances on, one along the M B T A lot line, sort of about four and a half feet or so from the property line. Um, we looked at a number of other studies early on, where we put the mass of the building along, right on, um, the street, we thought it would be best to keep the building back as far, as much as we could, and that was the reason why we have courtyard here, to get as much of the mass of the bulk of the building away from the street as possible. Uh, landscape plan, so the entrance to the underground parking is right here where the street remains two-way, which is great, so cars can come in and out this way. We have a few parking spaces, about twenty-two or so, that are under the second floor of the building, so basically at grade here, predominantly covered by the building, but all the other parking spaces, about seventy in total, or seventy-four in total, are accessed here, and they're completely below grade, so you have a site. The ground, the, the ground floor of the building, it's a whole... Actually, come closer.
Yeah.
So just to orient everybody again, Bridge Street is on the bottom of, of the page here, the main entrance to the building comes in off of Bridge Street lobby, there's a few residential units on the ground floor, which is about four total, and then there's some community space, little fitness areas, so forth, and then this is the parking that's covered by the building on, on the second floor. This is just subterranean level, showing how the parking comes down below grade, and all this parking is completely below grade along Bridge Street and along the railroad track side. Um, some of the building will be exposed on the abutting nine-nine-nine, Hancock side of development, but the parking will be enclosed, so you won't be looking at cars from that side either. It's another parking level, the lowest level down now, so you're down about twenty feet or so below the, um, the Bridge Street elevation at this parking lot. Currently where we are, the typical, you know, layouts, a combination of one bedrooms and two-bedroom units. And then the rooftop, we're doing a couple different things on the roof, we've got all mechanical equipment, that's all gonna be screened, uh, from view, especially as we've talked more with Park Service, being very conscious of what their views would be from their property, and back to the building. And there's also a fair amount of opportunity for some solar panels up on the roof, too, that would be equipped towards energy generation for the common area lighting, and some of the other common, common area uses. There will be, and there is, um, some common area roof deck on the roof as well. So this is a section of the building, this shows, to some degree, the grade topography that we have, was raised in some of the early hearings today, so the grade out on, on Bridge Street is at one elevation, say forty-one or so, and it drops down about seventeen to eighteen feet, when you get to the back of the site. So, um, here you can see the exterior parking still covered by the, the building overhead, and then the four stories of residential units above that. So this is currently where we are, the elevations, um, we've got a combination of brick, especially on the pieces faces over towards the Adams Mansion, which can try to set, trying to be a little more sensitive to the material usage facing the more historic side of the property, and a combination of plywood siding, and, um, what called board pattern, which is larger format, a, 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 a painted with trim around each panel. And so this is a view standing on Bridge Street, looking into the courtyard, as I said earlier, we tried to push the mass of the building back to Bridge Street to create the courtyard, and that's the front door to the building there. If you're parking at grade under the building, you go in here, or if you're parking where the most parking is below the building, you enter there, where Bridge Street remains two-way, so you come down underground, so it works out pretty well, we've been able to cover, conceal about seventy-five percent of the parking for the project. And then, knowing that the Park Service would be very concerned about what the view would be like in their property, we generate this perspective, and then tomorrow morning, we're gonna have a meeting with them to go over and help them understand a little better what they would be seeing when leaves fall from the trees, because those are mostly the trees on that background.
Well, there is a significant, there is a, but the, the, on the M B T A property, there are significantly mature trees on the M B T A property that are not gonna be disturbed by this development, and that's where those trees, um, exist today, so they actually exist, if you go there today, you'll see large trees that really cover much of that building. And the National Park site is actually down a little bit lower than this site, so you kinda look up at it, so any rooftop fixtures and things like that that Rob talked about really would be hidden from view, and that's, those are the conversations that we'll continue to have with the National Park. But we're gonna continue, and Rob, we'll talk about that, and we're gonna continue to work on that side elevation, primarily to ensure that it meets what the people of the New York, uh, folks, to better, Rob, concerning all those sites.
There's about a thirty-five foot wide deep buffer of landscaping, uh, solely on the T property between, say, the rail lines and the actual base of our building, which will disturb.
Catherine, can you go back to, um, something that shows the site with the land in the back, um, between, uh, the site and Furnish Brook? That's why I made that up to the... So, yeah, this, so, um, just so that you understand, this is the Temple, the Temple Bethel property, uh, that's being built right now, and that site actually comes back, Furnish Brook is down in that location, that area here, all is green, it's all mature growth that will be undisturbed by this development as well.
And that's, that's already owned by...
And that's owned by, that's right, that's owned by the Temple Bethel site, that site was about a ninety-four thousand square foot site, and that area was protected riverfront area, uh, so that the, the D E P regulations prohibit really any development in, in areas where, that haven't been developed before. And although this portion of the site where that line runs is also within the riverfront area, this whole site has been developed, called previously disturbed, and therefore it's not protected by the riverfront regulations. And we actually already appeared before the Conservation Commission, and they approved an order of conditions to allow this development to move forward. Where, and we, we continue to go through, uh, peer review with, with the planning, uh, department, uh, much of the technical review, as you know, is done by the peer review engineer, independent engineer, attired by the city, uh, on behalf of the city to review the proposal. Uh, much of that review is really a technical engineering related, uh, review, as it relates to the drainage. Uh, in addition to that, we continue to talk about the architectural elements of the building on the side that faces the Adams National Park. Uh, despite that, however, we don't anticipate that there will be any real modifications of the building as it relates to the variance that we're seeking here today, and hence why we, we applied when we did, and we're here for you tonight. Well, that's essentially the applicant's, uh, presentation, uh, tonight.
Question please. Who's gonna be using the parking as a grade level from the side? That is parking?
Yeah, I think it will be, it, it will be, um, it'll be tenants of the building, but also visitors as well. Um, but, but many of the tenants of the building will have spaces down below the building, and will utilize those primarily, but short, short visits, or, uh, coming to and from the property will have access to that parking, as well as visitors.
Will that parking only be, would you only be able to get to that parking from the one-way section?
Yes.
So it's in and out, right?
Yeah. All right, and that issue of traffic is being reviewed as well by peer review, and Jack Gillen, uh, former city traffic engineer, uh, is, is part of the development team, and he's worked on plans, uh, dealing with really all of the traffic related matters on this project.
I recall that was an issue that we had the last time we dealt with, was here, with technical traffic.
That's right, and, so you, you actually reviewed a project that was applied far by the owner, and at that project, interestingly enough, and one of the things that was hiding the parking, that, that plan actually had surface parking, and, and it was visible from all the properties around it, and probably the National Park Service as well, and that was the, one of the things that they wanted to ensure that happened, is that most of the parking was under the building, or at least hidden in some fashion.
The other, the other question is, uh, did you come back out on the corner there of, uh, Adams and Bridge, they, the, uh, down here, the...
Sure, the, the food pantry.
The pantry, and have you spoken to, uh...
Yeah, they, um...
Did the day, did they also pay?
No.
Interfaith.
Interfaith. Interfaith Social Services, that was actually at the planning board, that gentleman, that's the, uh, the principal, the manager of that.
Sitting right there.
Oh, he's here.
I'm representing, uh, here. I heard these were quite as jolly.
But Interfaith was, was president, in fact, I know that, uh, Peter and his, and some of his folks have had, uh, discussions with Interfaith, I think the primary concern, and they, he can certainly speak for himself, is, is parking related issues on the street and things of that nature, so, yeah, we're, we'll, and we'll continue to have those meetings as well moving forward. I know Peter's reached out.
All right, one, one last question, major question. Condos or apartments?
Apartments.
Apartments for now.
They're apartments for now. That's right, based on market conditions, they anticipate, they're gonna be built to the condo quality, just like the, the, the building is built, being built to the Temple Bethel, that level of quality.
Can I ask a procedural question?
Yes.
Because I know I bring this up every time somebody doesn't, hasn't gotten their peer review yet, um, or site planner, just, if we approve this at sixty units, and they come back, then it can only be heard in front of the planning board at sixty units, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody wanna speak in faith? Faith, you know, once, twice, you could be on the side. Once, twice, three times, I call that part of the hearing over, I do have a letter here, a bunch of letters, and, uh, since I'm, you know, speech impaired, we're gonna have, uh, a resubmit tonight.
That was close, that was after.
All right. We have a letter from the City of Quincy, Massachusetts Department of Public Works, we've viewed this, uh, this middle for the government project, and our commentary has followed drainage. Explain how the surface runoff will be disposed and treated. The proposed layout of the drainage structures, parentheses, W Q T, manhole, cul-de-sac recharging system are not effective. Two, submit calculations to show how the proposed infiltration structures have been sized to infiltrate the required recharge volume and will drain in seventy-two hours. Three, maintenance plant should include a financial responsibility for the maintenance work at whom they will be vested. work in whom they will be vested. Budget for yearly maintenance, four hundred to eight hundred is too low. In addition, the proposed drainage structures are proposed on someone's property. We're very concerned on the drainage structures to be operated and maintained, especially if there is a change of ownership on either one of these properties. Four, the maintenance plan should be recorded at the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds. Five, explain how to remove and store snow on surface parking lot. Six, apply for a drain connection permit from the Department of Public Works before construction. Seven, provide oil and gas separator to collect all garage floor drains. Eight, is there any treatment facility for the trench drain? Nine, the stormwater treatment facilities are proposed on adjacent developing site, stormwater management permit is required since these two sites are under the common plan of development. Water. One, perform water flow tests with the city's water department. Two, install a curb stop valve and box on sidewalk. Three, we require a single connection to the city's public water main on Bridge Street. The proposed four-inch gate for the domestic service is not reliable, and we require a six-inch gate with a reducer for the four-inch service pipe. Sewer.
Much better, believe me, Jen.
The existing pipe and manhole on the Bridge, on the Bridge Street should be inspected with television and tested for integrity pre and post development. Two, install a cleanout for the sewer service pipe. The proposed cleanout for the sewer pipe should have two twenty-two and a half degree elbows and one forty-five inch degree elbow. Details can be obtained from the city sewer department. Three, cut and cap existing sewer service at the back of sidewalk. Four, the proposed invert of the sewer service should be channeled into the, inside the city's manhole and match the invert of the existing trough from the main. The angle of entry should be less than ninety degrees. Five, how many gallons per day of new wastewater will be generated due to the developer? If the developer of this project is also the owner of nine-nine-nine Hancock Street, we would also like to have the total gallons of wastewater generated under these two projects. Six, provide profile of the proposed sewer service to sewer main in Bridge Street. Now, in general, we require the existing sidewalk and wheelchair ramp in front of the proposed development to be reconstructed instead of individual patchwork for the utility trenches and driveway entrances. The applicant should provide ADA slash AAV compliant sidewalk and wheelchair ramps and all crosswalks within the site. In addition, the curbs should also be reset or replaced prior to the construction of the sidewalk. Two, Bridge Street is in very bad condition. Developers should consider repaving the roadway to provide a better driving condition for the residents. Three, install stoner concrete survey monuments to delineate the public right of way. The monuments shall be set by a professional land surveyor and be installed prior to the acceptance of as-built plans. Four, what is the size of parking space for a compact car? The size of the parking space proposed does not conform to the size required. In addition, the proposed ramp of sixteen percent slope, sixteen percent, and the layout of the parking and traffic aisle do not provide an adequate traffic limit. Five, explain how the trash will be handled. Six, confirm the house number to be used with Engineering Division, Department of Public Works. Seven, install signs to alert drivers entering and exiting the garage to yield an adequate lighting should be provided, especially near the garage entrance. Eight, all trees over eight inch, eight inches caliper should be shown on the plans. Compliance with tree ordinance is required if any trees over eight inches are to be removed. The proposed subject is, uh, nine, the proposed subject is abutting the MBTA tracks and the developers proposing two levels of basement floor. We would expect some soil movement as a result of the extensive excavation. Is there any system to monitor the track movement during construction? Are there any measures to minimize the soil movement and protect the tracks from settling? In addition, the proposed structures are less than five feet from the MBTA property. Will there be any construction easement setting up? We would recommend the project be reviewed by MBTA. Ten, provide inlet protection for the existing catch bases on Bridge Street during construction. Eleven, upon completion of the project, as-built plans showing all utilities, building footprints, reference bounds, and benchmarks defining the total site, facilities, and railways need to be submitted along with the digital file. The as-built plan should be stamped and signed with a professional land surveyor or professional engineer. Can you please address all of this?
Right now?
Good job, Jess.
Which is why Brian asks, why is it good now and not after?
I appreciate, uh, this, I did volunteer to read this before, he saw what it was, so I just, I'll say it again. We are now at the part of the people who are undecided or opposed. Undecided or opposed? Just state your name and address.
I'm Jim Forn from East Milton, but I belong roots in Quincy. I have still family in Quincy, been back almost a hundred years in Swanau. The two captivating issues for ISS, where, if you look at that map, if we have one that you can bring up, where the big building on the corner, one oh five Adams and Bridge Street.
Yep. The white building, right?
Yeah. Great, and that's it right there, and, uh, we've had, we've, the, the traffic is really an issue there. The, uh, the building, the new building, with the construction going on, even during the construction period as well as after, is going to impact the parking on Bridge Street. I'm not quite certain, from all these lines, my old eyes, I tell you, uh, exactly where is it, across from Bridge Street is the main entrance into the parking, or is it the lower on Bridge Street?
It's lower.
It's, it's further down. It's, it's almost at the intersection of the, yeah.
It's further down, and that's, that's the, uh, the area where there's a lot of parking on Bridge Street, which we're going to lose, uh, to have access. I, when we spoke to you, with you folks before, we told you about the, really the volume, we're a big, uh, operation. We do seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand pounds of food a year. That's just the food pantry, but we have a very active thrift shop that generates about seventy to eighty thousand a year. We have a counseling program that is active in the afternoons and nights, because that's when people can get out to, uh, mental health counseling. We have a career closet, we have a financial aid section that we, uh, provide, uh, funds to keep people in their apartments, their houses, their fuel, electric, all of those little things that people get back when they get tight, uh, lose things, uh, lose money, and they need help with. So there's a lot going on in the site. We have meetings many, many evenings a week, because different board, we, within the agency, we have different boards, uh, committees that meet in the evening. So that, that is one of our concerns, is, is the traffic and the, uh, the more severe impact it's going to have on our operation. The, and the other thing is the, uh, the parking traffic, those are the two, two real concerns we can speak to. But as a citizen, I'd like, just want to say, I support the, our John Adams National Park, uh, because that's going to be a issue. We haven't, you know, we point to, very rightly point to the lovely trees in the MBTA, but we all know how, how much control we all have over the MBTA.
They don't have any control over the MBTA.
Right, right. And, and listen to, with the twenty-four parking spaces outside of the garage area on the, just what I'm, what I'm getting, how much green space is left out of thirty?
Well, that's what we, that was a square feet here.
Yeah, that's what was created through that, that courtyard entry.
That little bit right there, do you know how many square feet that is?
It's about three thousand.
Three thousand out of thirty thousand. All right, well, I, uh, just thought I'd toss that in.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
When, when do your clients park now?
Our client, we have very limited parking, I think they even showed it on their, one of their, uh, drawers there, I think we got about six, plus we have our own food van. We have to, uh, daily pick up and deliver, uh, food from Boston Food Bank, various supermarkets in the area who are very generous, uh, with giving us, uh, live food. We're the, we're the largest food bank, actually, uh, on the South Shore. We have real meats, real chicken, we have real dairy, and we have fresh fruits and vegetables. You go to any other food bank, they're going to toss your can and say, this stuff was...
So if there, if there's more clients, they park on Bridge Street now, is that what they do?
We do have some park on Bridge Street, they, yes, mostly it's on Bridge Street.
And, and how far does there, or is that too far along wire?
Oh, there, that goes through?
Yeah.
Well, if you can find parking space on there, uh, it's pretty well.
Yeah.
But we're primarily a morning operation on the food bags, so, you know, people get dropped off and picked up, but that's the traffic that adds to the traffic, the drop off and picked up. Many come by public transportation, you know?
I think that, I think that traffic studies will be as-built and not while the construction's going on, which, looking at it now, I, I see all those trucks up there, they were there all day, and they're out on Hancock Street doing it all day, and so it's, it's pretty busy, I can't imagine any clients to get there now. But that would be pretty close to being done when?
That's why we lock the location, because it's very accessible to public transportation, bus, and the, uh, MBTA, and they can walk, well, even people who even walk two or three miles.
Yeah.
Well, I thank you for your attention.
Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
Eight miles, pose the other side.
I must speak.
Of course.
Sixty-two Grandma Road, Joan Rodeville, um, I was at all meetings, Attorney Fleming spoke about before, I actually have them all videotaped, if you want to look at them, even the public meeting, that was the first one that I actually, um, the neighbor meeting with both of the counselors. Um, I'm going to address this, okay? Residential C, two thousand square feet per dwelling unit, okay? And that was a good point that, that gentleman just brought up. Four hundred square feet of open green space, that's the most dense residential code that we have. There's something wrong with the code. Now, per, the minimum lot size per dwelling unit is only five hundred square feet when you give this sort of special variance, so when the attorney says that, it does meet that variance, the, the actual square foot per dwelling unit on this project is a little bit over five hundred square feet. And you are over the hundred square feet for the open green space, it's barely over. And the height of this building is sixty-four and a half feet, am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so sixty, um, feet is the height of the building, okay? So, um, John Adams, Marion, Peaks, whatever, the building's too tall. Let them build, um, thirty units, they'll still build them, then it'll be a thousand, um, um, square feet per dwelling unit, it will be shorter, maybe they can get twenty-two units, because they won't need as much parking, but they'll add a little bit more green space, and you won't be able to see it, okay? Ameri, you know, they, if you're looking at it from the Adams house, if you don't see it, then you can design, you can build it, you can put anything you want on it, because you won't be able to see it, it will, you know, it'll be hidden, and it's disrespectful. I mean, it's just thirty units, someone else came here before, um, we spoke about this project, and they asked to do thirty, they withdrew without prejudice, if I remember right, I think it was Tom Williams' office, and we spoke about how you can go left there, and there's a one-way, it's a very congested area right now. So, um, I know when a project's going to go forward, and this project is going to go forward, and the thing is, just scale down, you know, I mean, when I say anybody scale down, make it lower. You don't have to make it thirty, you can compromise, maybe make it forty-five, that would remove one floor, but I think two floors should be removed. I mean, that's actually right near my house, I am going to be driving by that all the time and looking at that, so every time I come up Adams Street and I see that building up there, um, I'll especially be upset if I see a sign that says, you know, properties for rent, which could be on that property, you know what I'm saying? So it's about just scaling it down, I mean, they were already developed in the city, they're, they're, they're doing their first building, I would have rather them had bought these two already and already developed one giant project, that made more sense. But right now, they're asking you, they have the right to ask, we've got to fix the zoning code, um, in three years, um, when there's a new mayor, maybe they might introduce a new zoning code, to certainly know if I was the mayor, I would introduce a new zoning code that was more protective towards the people of Quincy who have lived there our whole life. There's something wrong with the zoning code, okay? And it needs to be fixed, it was designed for this sort of purpose, it's what it looks like, and it's a matter of, um, just stopping it. I mean, I don't even, I thought they had to go to planning first anyway, I'm so confused with the rules again, anyway, go to planning first, and then it's supposed to go to zoning. I'd rather have, you know, let, um, let, let Mr. Me deal with this first, let him make a decision, and then let it come back to you guys, I mean, I think it'd be good to, to, um, you know, and then whose ward is this in? Is it, is it Council La Forest, or is it Council Hughes? Neither one of them here to chip in on it, and it was weird, at the other meeting today, I saw Council La Forest, and Council La Forest, she did come to the other meeting, I can tell you right now, Council La Forest is for this project, so that should be a positive for you guys, but, um, not a positive for me. And, um, it's a matter of, um, why don't we continue this, that would be a good thing, I, I suggest to continue this, you know, so, and the last case, I would have withdrew that without prejudice instead of moving it on, so, anyway, thank you very much, you got time.
Thank you, John.
Anyone else that wants to speak, because those are undecided. I have a letter here. Let's do the last letter.
I'm ready.
I can read it, I mean, I did, I did go to Catholic school for a couple of years. Wait, hold on. Now, City of Quinsey, ZBA, statement against the Boston property development proposal of twenty-three and thirty-one Bridge Street. As a property owner and neighbor, this is from Francis Trevissani, ten-twenty-five Hancock Street, Unit 5D, Quincy, Mass. two oh six nine. As a property owner and neighbor, I'm requesting the ZB zoning board fully reject granting any variances to this project, the Boston property development proposal of twenty-three and thirty-one Bridge Street. By submitting our request for variances of minimum lot area, building setback, and building height, it appears to me the developer has come up with a plan that is unnecessarily excessive, arguing this is due to the unusual shape and topography of the site. I argue it is the proposed plan, it is a fault here. The shape and topography of the lot is a constant, the zoning ordinance reflect an understanding of this, which this proposal does not. We will know, we all know the general health, safety, and welfare of the community are the driving forces of zoning, the public shield against overdevelopment and misuse of land. Zoning gives developers guidelines for reasonable growth, especially applicable here in light of such a massive transformation of land use as this proposal intends. A quick summary shows the developer's intentions to raise two two-family houses in a garage, replacing these with a five-story, sixty-unit building with underground parking and ninety-eight cars. In simple numbers, if the existing residence, residences house a potential of four families of four equaling sixteen people and a potential of eight to ten cars, we're being asked to bend the rules to accommodate a potential of two-hundred-plus people and a hundred-plus cars. Being close to public transportation can minimize vehicular use and an attractive selling tool, but not an argument against these numbers. Making a point of other buildings taller in the area is not an argument, the proposal mentions how it is sensitive to the historical properties in the, in close proximity, and how is this sensitive, reflect, how is this sensitivity reflected in asking for a height variance so that the upper floors will be seen above the tree line from the Adams estate? This begs the question, why so large? The answer is because the developer has a right to propose this vision, but this vision flat out does not fit the space, obviously asking for variances pretty much backs that up. The City of Quincy through zoning and planning has responsibility to a rule that this is excessive and unlarged growth in the neighborhood already under stress from neighboring newly expanded properties, especially the old central middle school, and replacement of Temple Beth El with a five-story fifty-five unit building from the same developer. A blue-sky mentality of growth can be a good thing, but there also comes a time when common sense has to temper that, for it is not just a building, it is a correction, it's a connection to the neighborhood, it's a quality of life issue, for all concerned that it's a potential stress on state services now and in the future. Very good.
I call that part of being closed. Gentlemen. What do we want to do?
I, I, I mean, I just, and, and go back to this every time we just come in front of us before, I think it puts us in a very difficult position when people haven't finished going through planning, because we're sitting here with one project and one project's open. The, if we approve it at sixty units, it goes in front of planning at sixty units, there's no changing of that density outside planning, so we have no idea what they're looking at for density purposes, and which was our concern the last time, and here we are, asked to approve it before they even looked at it, so, I just... it before they even look at it. So I just, having heard the case, I'm not in favor of this, I'm told, planning has their say in the density.
Okay.
I haven't heard enough about the topography that you need for a variance based on the soil conditions and property to warrant, you know, 25% increase in the coverage of this lot. How about 25%? It's very large. It doesn't seem to be very much green space left, like 60 units were to be built here. I appreciate that we're a part of this all the way, but I haven't heard enough to warrant my, the relief of that site based on warrants for variance.
And just, a couple of issues with the planning board trouble me. I'd like to see it resolved, because what if the National Park Service, and the result of the planning is to drop a floor? That's what both are pointing out. I mean, it is a potential. I don't think it'll happen, but I'd like to see that resolved. I'd like to see the planning board on better, because they handle the parking better, and they handle the traffic better than we do. And I think that those are key issues at that. I, at this point, I believe that the planning board is moving along, and it probably going to have to resolve. But I'd like to see the resolve before we find out.
And I don't think that puts us at a disadvantage for weeks.
Right.
I agree. I'm also sort of surprised there's the counselors here, and that there's the absence. Maybe everybody does approve in the neighborhood, or doesn't care, was concerned before, but I would like to hear from the youngsters. There's two of them involved. I'm surprised not to hear, and I agree, if this is a project, project's a new project, and I'd like, knowing each one next to it, and like the, the same developer, I think it lends itself to a view and a vision that is consistent in the area and not hodgepodge. It is very dense. There is very little green space, which I hate. I am concerned about the national parks. That's going to be decided, should be decided before I get a hold of it. So once I know that, I know whether you're looking for 60, or you're looking for 50, or you're looking for 45, and that could very easily change this whole discussion, as what Russell said, or what I think, or what Brian thinks, and not force us to say, oh, we need you to cut down, cut down.
We may not have to.
And it may be decided before I do. So, I mean, I think this should be continued. I don't like, believe me, I don't like pushing it off and having to hear it again and dragging you guys back in, but I think to some extent, you're here, knowing that's going to happen anyway, and that's, you know, that's how this process is now proceeding in the city. So I would suggest that if you continue, let you continue your process with the planning board. And I'd like to see something from the MBTA that says, you know, this is what we've agreed to do, so we don't have any problems with our drains. Now, at the Adams Park, we're all set. We love this development just the way it is. We've made our agreement. Trees are fine, and you're going to have to sit and think, and my objections have been pretty much squashed by somebody else.
Counselor.
And also, interfere a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely.
Come up with some type of plan for a thing that's an asset to the community for some reason.
I don't use to being a thorn in your side.
Oh.
But, yeah, I mean, obviously, I'd like to see that, Mr. Thorne sitting on your side, on your side, and you can't help but, I'm sorry, that would make everybody up here, I'm sure, very happy.
Absolutely appreciate your comments, and certainly I understand your concerns about making sure that the planning board matters a little bit further along. So we certainly agree.
When are you going to be there?
So we're not before the planning board until October.
October.
And so it'll probably have to be the second meeting in October before they would hear.
Before they would hear?
So this is what we got going. We have, yeah, we have October 25th, November 15th ahead of that.
So October 25th, because the planning board is actually on October 12th.
You can do 25th.
So the 25th would be perfect.
Thank you.
And with certainty, and I've heard, I heard your comments as a chairman about the discussion, about the grounds for the relief, and I'll certainly discuss that as well as part of the issues that were raised by the other members, making sure that the National Park Service and the MBTA and others were staffed for it as well. And we'll continue to meet with Interfaith. I know that Mr. McLaughlin has reached out to Interfaith Social Services as well as some of the other neighbors. There's a parking issue on that street, somewhat related, somewhat related to residents of the community parking in that street, rather than parking in the garage that's located there. So those are things that we're trying to work cooperatively with the counselors to resolve, and so we'll continue to work with them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you make a motion to extend the hearing to October 25th?
We got in case number 16-057, 058. Boston Properties Development LLC, for various to construct a 60-unit multi-family residential building on the premises, Number 23 and 31 Bridge Street. I'd like to make a motion for withdrawal, pardon, to reschedule it for October 25th.
We're not withdrawing, just continue.
Just continue. To October 25th. Go right, I go.
Second. How the motion seen then, all favor?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, we can vote to adjourn.
Second. Second. All's okay to say.